Good evening and welcome to City Focus. I'm Marty Olson, your host, and tonight I'd like to welcome back my friend, Aaron Ide. It's amazing, it's election season. And Aaron is a Republican endorsed candidate for New London City Council, and I thought it would be a good opportunity to bring him back and reintroduce him after running two years ago. So, Aaron, I want to welcome you.
Yeah, thank you for having me. Yeah, it's flown by since the last election. I mean, last time was the very first time I've ever ran for anything higher than a vice president of my fraternity back in college. So, you know, running right for city council, especially in a city like New London, especially running as a Republican where, you know, we're out registered and outnumbered and our ground game doesn't have the same, you know, weight as the, as the machine does in New London. That was definitely a learning experience. I've gotten a lot of information. I'm an engineer by training, right? So, I like data and I wanted to drive through that. And after the election, I did a whole, you know, debrief on myself and how we did and what we could do better and, you know, and then time flies, right? Now, 18 months later, we're already back into election season. I'm happy that I was endorsed by the Republican Party this time.
Well, I will say for the benefit of the audience, Aaron's a top shelf guy. He's sharp as a tack. And if you have the opportunity to have a talk to him, take advantage of it. He's got a lot of knowledge about our community, although he's relatively new in New London. He's thrown himself into things and I think that you'll be impressed and that he will earn, and the key is he'll earn your vote. And I think that's something that we have to look at there. It's not easy coming from the minority party in New London, but I think you've, as you've stated, you've done a good party as well as self-analysis and I'm sure that you've laid out a plan, at least between your ears, that you feel will give you a better opportunity for success this time.
Yeah, absolutely. I think in general, one of the things I like about New London, we have a lot of history. But it also means that I've, I've lived here now for 13 years and that makes me a newcomer in this city, right?
Well, it does.
If you think of the highest, I grew up in North Jersey, right? Where the population is much more transitory, the housing stock is much newer, right? It all grew in their suburban sprawl of the, you know, the 60s and 70s and 80s and 90s, right? So, no one, no one in my town growing up had parents that grew up in our town, right? Not a single person. Our town had 1,000 people, you know, 40 years before and we were at 30,000 by the time I was growing up there, right? So, having that kind of history here in New London is one of the cool things about the city that, you know, people trace their ancestry here back seven generations or heck, just the 1700s, right? So, and you, and you hear people about, you know, talking, even when they leave, they talk about New London and growing up here and being from the community here. And there's a lot of pride in it and there's a lot of, a lot of history and a lot of culture and a lot of pedigree that, you know, I've definitely been made to feel like a member of this community. I, I love the city. I've convinced my wife, who grew up in Westerly, to move here. So, that was a challenge in and of itself, right? To get a Westerly girl to move across the border and across a couple of rivers and move to, get moved to New London.
Yeah, well, the Westerly and Pocatuck are kind of, they've got a little bit of, you know, they, they run together a little bit, I think, in Stonington because they're right out there on the border. But otherwise, I mean, New London's like another planet away across the Thames.
Oh, yeah. Our wedding, we got married in Stonington and I thanked her family for crossing the Pocatuck River and I thank my family for coming in from across the country, right? They're coming from California or Florida or wherever they're living. My friends are coming from, you know, Seattle, Michigan, Wisconsin, wherever they're all my friends, you know, have dispersed across the world. And, you know, her family, for the most part, is either in Westerly or Coventry or somewhere in Rhode Island, right, nearby. Yeah, so it's definitely, definitely a big, you know, big change in the, in the, in the culture, I guess, in this part of Connecticut and this part Southeastern, New England that, you know, you have that history, you have the heritage and you, your family moves here and they stay here and you put down roots.
Well, a lot, a lot of families still have their, their, their roots are New London, but they may be in Mottville or Waterford, East Line or some of our neighboring communities. I mean, and for many different reasons, whether it was, you know, I think when I was growing up, that, you know, a lot of folks were relocated due to urban renewal and the construction of the Second Gold Star Bridge. And ironically, in those days, New London was the real estate, was, folks couldn't afford to stay, so they moved out to the, out to the farmland, actually. Very rural in those communities where you could, things were a lot less expensive and how things have kind of changed over time. But I also want to congratulate you. I mean, you're, you're a new dad. So, how old is your, your, your daughter and your, your, how you adopting and adapting to parenthood?
So, I guess anyone that saw me two years ago on this show, I probably looked a lot less tired. My daughter, Miriam Jeanette Ide, was born on June 17th, so it was the day before Father's Day and that will put her at eight weeks old this coming up Saturday. So, it's, what, Wednesday today and Saturday should be eight weeks. So, I think we started to get a hang of it. My parents came up to visit for about a month, a couple of weeks after she was born. So, they just left maybe two weeks ago. You know, they came up to visit and help out. Sam's been getting a lot of help from, my wife's been getting a lot of help from her, her family, her aunts, her uncles, her parents, her cousins. So, we've been, we've been getting a lot of assistance, a lot of friends have been helping us because a lot of our friends went through this path right before us, but it's been great. I love my daughter. I've never thought like it'd be so like immediately infatuated and in love with anyone so quickly, but it's wonderful and I love her tremendously and she is qualitatively the worst roommate I've ever had, but I can't hold it against her. You know, she screams and cries and wakes me up in the middle of the night and, you know, poops and pees all the time, but you know, it's, it's hard to, hard to stay mad at her. She's so adorable.
Well, look on the bright side, enjoy this because they've become teenagers. Then they'll have different issues and different worries for the parents.
Yeah.
But I, I think that's terrific and I, you know, I congratulate you and your wife and everything goes well and everything, you got a terrific, terrific youngster.
Yeah, so I, like, I mean, I was holding right before I came here, I was actually, wasn't even wearing this, I was going to come in a shirt and tie, I wore it to work today and was holding her out on the, on the, you know, the front porch and she decided to spit up on me. So, I was like, oh, got about 40 minutes, get to Marty's show and I should go get changed up and, you know.
You did a good job.
Prove some resiliency, I guess.
You took the word, literally the word out of my mouth, which you certainly have been. Well, from running two years ago versus what you're anticipating this year, what changes have you, are you anticipating in terms of how you approach your campaign, the issues facing the city? Have things been static or they've been very dynamic, changing? What, how are you evaluating our community?
I think the mayor's running for reelection right now, so he's.
He's going for his third term.
Going for his third term, yep. Trying to, trying to convince people that we've made changes for the better, right? So, as every one of my coworkers from EB drives down Bank Street on their way out of the city, because very few of them work in New London, but anyone that lives on the east side of the river, basically goes down Bank Street from New London office in EB, they go down Bank Street, they pass, I think, I counted, last, I went about two weeks ago, I counted 26 empty storefronts to 23 filled ones along Bank Street. So, they pass more than 50% empty storefronts. And at the end of the parade, at the Parade Plaza, you see a big sign that says, "New London, it's happening." So, if that isn't some Orwellian, you know, shenanigans at the end of the, you know, you literally just telling people to ignore what they see with their own eyes as they go down the street of a derelict downtown and a big sign that says, "It's happening." And what is happening is we're adding high, high-priced, you know, apartments, we're adding a new community center, which is effectively going to be the swimming pool and the gymnasium for those high-priced apartments. I hope we can get some fidelity on how that's going to play out, right? How the taxpayers in New London are going to be accessible to the community center when it opens, if it's going to be opened at all, right? You know, they pitched it as a $20 million project, they're at, what, 80 million now? And it's only going to be an empty shell of a building, they're not even going to outfit it for that price.
I think the original was 30.
Or 30 million.
30 and it was going to be, let's say, like this. Now it's up to 40 and it's going to be like this.
No, it was more than, more than 40. It was 40 for that and then there was another 30 they asked for again, so we're almost up to 80, I believe, now.
I mean, and where's the funding though?
For the total all-in, yeah, the funding, I think, allocated right now, you're correct, is 40 with the next year proposal to finish it off. So, it's going to be a whole bunch more work.
And the mayor is banking on our neighbors and our surrounding communities to come into New London, to this facility and pay, pay fees to pay for it.
So, Waterford always has a pool at their high school.
And a community center.
And a community center. Why would Waterford residents come here? Why would Groton residents, they have every point there, come here? I don't believe you're going to get that much surrounding communities to come in. I think overall, it's becoming a, a selling point for the apartment buildings, that they don't have to build their own gymnasium, they don't have to build their own rec center, they don't have to build their own, you know, swimming pool. And I, I wouldn't be surprised if they have some kind of deal worked out with the city that says, if you buy an apartment or you rent an apartment there, you get access to that community center. Either it's built into the rent or there's some kind of deal for the whole overall property. But I would really be curious on how that plays out because it's starting to feel very much like this is a, a publicly funded private enterprise for developing that, that property. And with all the histories gone into the whole, the whole Fort Trumbull property area there, the last thing New London needs is another black eye. So, I think overall, we have to be smart. I think that's already committed, we've already committed to that community center. I just want to make sure that it's open and accessible to the people of New London, the people that pay the taxes, the people that need it the most have access to that community center, right? That we have a way for people from the north end of the city or even from downtown to get to this community center that's now over by the fort. You can't walk over the, over the railroad bridge, right? You got to go all the way around Shaw's Cove to get there. So, I bike around the city a lot, you know.
That's one of the things that, I mean, I've clamored for was, as opposed to having this pedestrian bridge that the state is partially funding, I mean, 20 million bucks now plus, again, everything's plus by a lot, over the railroad tracks, if they would have funded a pedestrian bridge from the waterfront park over to Fort Trumbull. And that would have cut down that slice of pie there that you just alluded to to get, to go around.
Oh, absolutely.
Down Howard Street and to get down there.
Absolutely, right? There's, the, the whole bridge to the, the Coast Guard Museum is going to be great. I'm going to be very happy, I'll be waiting in line to be the first people going there, right? I love the idea of having Coast Guard Academy, I've visited the Air Force Museum, or sorry, the Coast Guard Academy and the Coast Guard Museum being in New London, right? I've been to the Air Force Museum, I've been to West Point, right? I've, you know, I've been to a lot of the national museums down in DC. I love going to museums and they will draw a crowd, they will bring tourism to New London. It will be another thing that we could, we could help sell our city, right? We are a cultural capital of Southeast Connecticut and cultural institutions help that, right? I think their projections for that are going to be, are way optimistic and I have no clue how a $20 million footbridge is going to significantly help their ticket sales or admission prices versus a crosswalk. It doesn't make any sense to me. I think it was a nice to have that someone got promised and it was part of the deal somewhere and like everything in New London, there's some kind of deal being made, right? That we don't see, it doesn't get, it doesn't get told to us, so.
The proverbial backstory.
Exactly. And that's one of the reasons I've decided to start running for council, I just, I get frustrated with the way things have been done around here, right?
So, what other, other topics or issues are you kind of wrapping your arms around that you think are important as you're moving into the election season? I mean, New London always seems to have a number of them and, but let's get your take, not my take, you're running.
So, yeah, so not to give a "I told you so," but the number one thing I ran on two years ago was housing, right? Was how do we have affordable housing and still market rate housing and owner occupancy, right? There is a, there is a fact of just general, you know, generational wealth is passed down through real estate in this country, right? The main way that people pass their wealth from their parents to the children is through the real estate they own. So, if you have nothing but rent checks, you don't have anything to pass on to your, your kids when you pass away or when you retire and move somewhere smaller, right? So, we have to address homeownership and housing in general in the city. And that's what I ran on two years ago and it was a huge "I told you so" because our housing prices have skyrocketed, housing stock has gotten older, it has not been improved significantly and the housing stuff we are adding are well, over market rate, high-end luxury apartments, right? So, we're not doing a good job of addressing the needs and I don't think we need to worry about things like rent controlled apartments because that just hurts the community as a whole. If you're building all these rent controlled properties, it's only good for the few people that get it and it hurts everyone else that has to now pay an elevated above market rate to offset the cost of having those people in those properties. So, I think there's a middle ground there. So, my solution, and I ran on this two years ago, I'm 100% going to keep running on this, is urban rehabilitation program for, for first-time homebuyers in the city of New London. If you buy a property in New London and it is your first property, however much money you can put into that improvements, so start with safety and structural things, right? New roofs, new lolly columns, you know, new windows, things that really help revitalize the city and get rid of some of these blighted properties. The first, some amount of money, I'm leaning towards about 20 grand, I think, is the city can absorb against our grant list with the current purchasing rate, the houses that we're selling right now in the city at the prices we're selling for. Let's say the first 20 grand you invest in your house, you get a tax abatement from the city of New London for that much money. Meaning, if you put 20, buy a house, you put 20 grand of your own money into fixing that house up, you don't have to pay the first 20 grand of your taxes for a certain period of time. And that way, it's going to drive homeownership, it's going to reduce our, our blighted properties, it's going to drive people to want to fix their properties. They'll take landlords that have properties that are not spending to fix them up because they don't think they get more money out of them to sell those properties. It's a win-win-win for the entire city and for the homeowners and for the people in New London.
Well, I think you're, you're on to something there. The city does have a, a housing conservation program, which is run through the, I think, Public Works Department or the Development Office, one of the two, but to rehabilitate. But it's just meeting code, it doesn't necessarily spur major improvements.
Yep. I did that, actually, when I bought my house, I got $300 to put in a handrail into my basement. That was the only thing that it qualified for. I had put my own, and then I also put, I thought it was going to cover a smoke alarm system that the home inspector said I required, but it didn't even cover the smoke detector. So, that was an extra $2,000 when I bought the house. So, yes, 100% agree, I got $300 cash from the city or I guess an abatement or rebate check for, for putting in a handrail. So, I don't know if that's really going to do it to, like you said, it's not going to, to help the blighted properties, it's not going to improve our housing stock, right? We have an old housing stock, but it's not necessarily bad housing stock. I live in a 113-year-old house. It needs constant work, but it has good bones, right? It's made with solid, you know, my 2x4s are two inches by four inches, they are solidly built. My, my structural members are six by six pillars everywhere, right? I have, I have good bones in that house, I put new windows in, new roofs in, right? Things like that that wear out over time, I've, I've had to replace over the years. But for the most part, it's, the house in Stockton, New London is, is survivable and it's usable, but it has to be maintained and it has to be reinvigorated.
Yep.
And I think, I think tax abatements is probably your best bet to do that. You're not costing the city anything, you're just taking away from the grant list, but in the long run, now you can reassess that house for a higher value in the future and the city can keep that money and more importantly, it stops being a blighted property, right? If you have a blighted property that no one's paying taxes on, you're going to get a lot more money, someone putting 20 grand in it, not collecting that first 20 grand from them and having them live there for the next 30 years than you would if they're living in a house that is not paying taxes or they're squatting or they, you know, or it's, or it's so badly damaged that the assessor won't even, you know, fairly assess it because it's not livable condition, so.
Are you comfortable with public safety in the community as we sit here this evening?
So, I think we have an ordinance for minimum staffing or police department, I don't think we've ever hit.
80.
Yeah, 80. And I think, I, I don't know the exact number today, but it's usually in the, in the low 60s that we have of officers, of sworn officers at any given time in the city.
The year I served as mayor, which was 2010, 11, we had 95 cops. So, there's been some serious slippage. We started with Finizio and we changed our government and it hasn't reversed.
I think the, the police officers we have have been doing an excellent job. I think they're overworked and under, under-loved by the community, right? We just went to the, the National Night Out, right? The police were down giving away bikes to the community, they were, you know, doing the, you know, the meet and greets and getting, putting a human face to the police officers that are here to serve and protect the community down at Ocean Beach and, and shake hands and take pictures of kids and, you know, let them, let them test the car accident seat thing that they brought, right? And it was, it was, it was a good time, it was a beautiful night at Ocean Beach. Last year we did it and it was, it was hot and humid and muggy. This time was absolutely beautiful day, this, you know, I think it was last week. The whole, you know, the, the police are doing the best they can with the resources we've given them and they're some of the hardest working people in the city and by far the most underappreciated. I think they go out of their way to do good work and to be respectful and courteous to people and I think as soon as they're done giving away free bikes, half the community turns their back at them and says, "We hate you guys again." So, I don't blame them, that it's hard to recruit, right? It's hard to recruit any job where you're immediately hated, right? And I think there's enough people that do appreciate them, but I, I think they're not the vocal majority, right?
Well, I mean, I think, I mean, I throw this out for discussion purposes, but I mean, I think that we've got a city council, which is an office that you're seeking. At least six of the councilors are openly hostile to the police and have kind of taken the Floyd, you know, defund the police negative attitude. And I think that permeates the entire community and it's reflected in the lack of police presence downtown, which is also, I think, reflective of the vacancies you alluded to earlier in the, in the storefronts. And it's worse on State Street than it is on Bank.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I mean, you're not going to want to come here, invest your time and your energy and your livelihood creating business if you don't think you can be protected and safe in your own storefront or that your property won't, is protected, right? Our country is wonderful in that we protect people's property and their person, right? That is fundamentally built into our, our constitution and into our laws. And we fail that as a community when we, when we say that the police don't have any bearing and the criminals have more rights than the police do in our communities. I think overall, we have to have a balance, right? I don't think, I think like any profession, there are bad actors, right? There's, you can't say every cop is a good cop and every criminal is a bad person. Some criminals may have had a, a tough go at it or got wrapped in the wrong thing or coerced into something, they, they aren't necessarily a bad person, they may have done a bad thing. Same thing with the police, you can have as many good cops as you have, you know, every, all, like it's the saying, one, one bad apple spoils the bunch, right? So, for every time you have a big nationwide, you know, incident that, that goes and someone gets killed by the police and becomes national news, you hear about it, you don't hear about the other way when a cop gets stabbed by a criminal or shot by a criminal, right? And it should be that, that should also be national news, right? These people are putting their life on the line. My father-in-law is a retired police officer in Westerly, right? They have families too, right? They have children at home. My wife is a child of a police officer, you know? They are human beings, they're, like I said, they're just overworked and under-loved and I think we have to show them a level of respect that we do other, other civil servants in this community, like, you know? I don't know why we've, we've backed away from that lately, I think it's become a political rallying cry for people. It's an easy punching bag because it's a.
Are you willing to commit funds to, for more cops?
It's my understanding, we already have the funds for those cops, we just don't staff to it. We, we, we try to defund them, like you said, there's a backstory. We, we use the back door to defund them because we do have a mandate that won't let us defund them. So, it's a matter of being able to, one, make sure that the, the city and the police unions work together so we can go out and hire and recruit and have a retention policy, right? Like we face this at EB too. We hire, we spend a ton of money on, on attracting talent, but very little on retaining it. I think the police force would be the same thing. Heck, Public Works is the same thing. I talked to my neighbor who works at Veolia, right, at the, for the city water, the sewer treatment, but they have no turnover, they love their job. I mean, not no turnover, but it's very minimal and they love their job. I've never thought, if you talk to people that work in the sewer industry, that they say they love their job, but they really like working together, they like their, the benefits and the jobs they do and they, they feel respected. And half of any profession is feeling respected and wanted in your career, right? That you've made a good life decision, so.
Well, I think that, you know, there's, as John Russell would like to say, I mean, there's a perception issue that plagues the city and, you know, public safety is certainly a, one of those considerations, that folks don't feel safe going into the central business district in particular. And that, you know, folks will come down and if they're, you know, if they're given a hard time by people panhandling or they feel threatened or whatever, you know, they may not come back.
It's not just not coming back, I mean, it's, I, I work with these people every day, right? Most of my coworkers at EB are engineers or finance people or business, you know, business majors.
So, they're highly educated.
They're educated people, they don't live in the city, they've, one, when I told people I was buying my house in New London, they all freaked out. Why would you do that, right? I go, because it has culture and I grew up in Jersey and I like the urban environment, I like the culture we have, I like the things that we can do, I like the walking distance, I like the fact that I have a gas line to my house, I like the fact that I can talk to my neighbors over a fence, right? That I'm not going through the woods to go talk to my neighbor, right? I prefer living in the, kind of an urban environment, it's what I've grown up doing, right? But I think you're right, there is a perception. I mean, heck, we've had going away parties at the social and I've had coworkers tell me, you know, either, you know, female coworkers ask me if I could walk into their car at dusk because they're afraid of walking just to the parking lot in New London because they don't feel safe going outside in New London. And I've lived here for 13 years, I'm a big guy, you know, I don't, I don't necessarily feel that unsafe, but, you know.
But I think that, but as, I think it's important for an elected official to understand how others feel.
100%.
You know, I think that's a flaw that our mayor has. He doesn't feel threatened, so therefore, nobody should feel threatened. And you have to understand and feel, as President Clinton would say, you know, feel your pain, understand what your constituents are seeing, what they're feeling and do something about it.
Yeah. And the problem is, it's not our direct constituents, right? It's the surrounding communities. And, and it becomes a negative feedback loop, right? When you go to the other surrounding communities, we have the services, so they see a homeless person or a beggar or someone, a junkie ODing on the side of their street, they call their police and their police bring them to L&M or they bring them to the homeless hospitality center in New London and they leave them here. And we become that service center for those communities. I think we have to work with those other communities and it becomes a negative feedback loop again, that these other communities see New London as a depository for things that they don't want or people, be honest, for people they don't want. And we have taken them in and we are inclusive of those people and it's our duty to serve them. But it's also our duty to reach out to those other communities and get, you know, pilot assistance, you know, payment in lieu of taxes from the state for, for the services rendered to our surrounding community, right? Those other communities are paying taxes to the, you know, various different taxes to, to the state for different things. Let's start taking some of the state payroll taxes from those communities to help us support those, those, those problems, right? And again, this is more of a concern and a push for, you know, our, our state elected officials, but I don't think they pushed it for that, right? They, you know, no one's more focused right now on getting, getting free food for the high school.
Well, I strongly believe, and this is something that, that when you get elected, I hope that you will, will promote, is that, you know, some of the issues that are state issues, that our state elected officials, Marx at the Senate and Nolan, the state rep and Connolly, state rep, that, you know, often they won't move on something, especially if it's, could be controversial, unless they get motivated by the local legislative body. And if the local legislative body sits on their hands, they're not motivated to do anything. And I don't see our local delegation doing much for New London. They basically are toeing the party line, whatever the state is promoting and the state leadership, but they're not actively doing squat for New London, any of them, in my humble opinion. And I think that it's up to the council and, and the mayor to give them via resolutions and ordinances and motions and this is what we need, this is what we want here, this is what you're here to do for us. What do you think?
So, let's be honest, I don't think as a Republican I'm going to win a majority like myself and, you know, running mates are going to win a majority in New London. I want to be able to be able to be a voice for the minority, the relatively large minority of moderates and conservatives in the city that feel like they're being ignored because of moderates and conservatives in the city that feel like they're being ignored because of the cacophony that progressives have been making in the city and the noise that they get, right? Again, our elected officials at the state level are listening to what the loudest people are saying, not what the majority of the people are saying. So you have a whole bunch of people that quietly sit there and nod, nod their head and hold their tongue, you know, bite their tongue and don't say what they're thinking, and then they come up to you afterwards and they say, "Oh, my man, I can't believe they did this," or whatever, right? So they're going after the things that are the loudest and, you know, most important thing to the loudest and most politically-driven group of people, right? And so we need to ensure that, that, that I can do constituent work, right? If I'm in a minority position, I have to work with my, you know, likely Democrat colleagues on the city council to make sure we have resolutions that we can all agree, things that can overwhelmingly help. And that's why I think, one, stay away from the social issues, right? It's always the third rail. They're literally designed by the big, the big parties to drive a wedge between people and get people to show up to the polls, right? Things like abortion. Roe v. Wade was law for 50 years. There has been, what, six Democratic presidencies with full control of Congress? They never passed the law that legalized it. Similarly, the Republicans with gun control, right? They've had Republican presidents with Republican congresses, they've never passed a universal right to carry, right? These are things that, they hold these wedge issues over our heads and social issues over our heads to push them through and push them through over the finish line to get them to election, get elected, and when they're elected, they don't do anything. So I think, one, focusing on social issues like that at the city council level is a losing proposition. All you're going to do is alienate your, your, the people you have to work with, right? So if you're going to have to work with, I'm, I, you know, seven people on the, on the city council, as you well know. I need four people, three other people, including myself, to vote on something that gets something done. So I need to convince three other people that what we need to do is good for all of the community, if not, you know, the electorate, right? So I want, you know, like, I don't, I don't have any aspiration of winning 15 terms in a row. I want to win a two-year term, break as much stuff as I can, and fix as many problems as I can. Again, I'm an engineer. I like fixing broken things. I didn't become an engineer because I was good at math and was told to do it. I was an engineer because I tried to take things apart and most of the time put them back together. I like to fix broken things. Half my, my vehicles until my most recent vehicle have always been over 150,000 miles on them. I have a, you know, 60-something-year-old boat that I got from my grandfather, you know, I, you know, I'm naturally wanting to, you know, fix broken things. So I want to get a two-year term and let's break things, right? And so like a good example of that, something that we can get past cultural wedge issues, let's look at public works, right? Smart public works. We just, right now, they're cutting down a bunch of trees because they're, they're damaging power lines. We're also getting money from the EPA to go fix lead pipes in the ground. When we're tearing up our streets again for the third time in five years, why don't we bury some of these power lines? Put conduit. You know, you walk around a lot of big cities, especially around Europe, you don't see power lines in the cities. Heck, even most of the cities around the US are starting to bury the power lines. We're going to tear up all the ground and put in new pipes and replace all these lead pipes through New London. Let's bury the power lines, so then you're not worried about the trees, because when you tear all these trees and you're not replanting these trees, now you're going to have erosion issues, and now the streets are going to crack, and the sidewalks are going to wash away, and you're going to have storms. We're a coastal city, right? We get massive flooding and it all washes into the, into the fames or into the, the sound. So let's be smart on how we do our urban planning. So one of the things, if I get elected, I want to pass a 50-year public works plan. So every two years, they have to re-up their 50-year plan, but have a plan of how we're going to do all the public works in the city for the next 50 years. Not for, "Oh crap, this thing's broken, we have to go fix this," right? Let's go with, we have to tear up, you know, Montauk Avenue. We tore it up four years ago to put new manholes in. We tore it up two years ago to put new gas lines in. We're going to tear it up again to put new, they'll get rid of lead water pipes. That's mind-boggling that we waste that much money, right? It's absolutely mind-boggling that the city keeps blowing that kind of money. The only people that benefit are the pavers, the road pavers that are getting paid to tear up the street three times in the last five years for the Montauk Avenue. So let's tear up a road smartly, do all the work on that section, and then go to the next one. And in 50 years, we're going to have a beautiful city. We won't have any above-ground power lines, we won't have to worry about storm damage knocking out people's power during the, during a storm, that we get a storm every three freaking weeks, right? So let's, let's, let's try to minimize the damage we get and, and maximize the return on investment that we, we spend for our public works in the city, so. I think that's, that's an example of how I can work with them, and those are the kind of stuff I'd rather go to the state before, right? Because if I go to Marx or Connolly or Nolan and say, "I need $50,000 to go fix gas, water, and, and electrical under the street, and I need state money to do that," they have no reason to say no, right? We're not, we're not trying to wedge people apart, I'm trying to get things done.
Well, now, as a, as a, as a, as a new parent, maybe a taste early, but at some point, you're going to have to deal with thoughts of education. And although the council does not have a direct role in our city's education, they do approve an ordinance for the city's education budget. Can you share some thoughts you have on our educational system? Are we doing a good job? Is there room for improvement? Are we getting good value for our, our tax dollar?
So start with the val, the last first, right? Value for our tax dollar, we spend more per student than almost every district in the state. Our graduation rate is in the bottom 5% I believe. Our dropout rate after the pandemic is astronomically highest, the high 30%, I think, this last year, which is terrifying, that a public school in 2023 can have a dropout rate near 40%. And again, this is from the standardized testing that we reviewed back in, oh, so sorry, I guess, going back for the viewers, I've been on the Board of Education Programs and Projects Committee for the Board of Ed with Brian Doughty and some of the other board, some of the other Board of Ed members. So we've been reviewing the high school project and the middle school project and up to recently got canceled, the Harvard Elementary School project, so that got canceled, and that's another whole thing, but I'm trying to get through the final, the final throes of the development projects on those two big educational things. As far as too far ahead to plan, I don't think there's a such thing as too far ahead. I have an eight-week-old daughter. When she was three weeks, I got her social security number, and I opened her a 529 college fund. So I started right away. Within a week of getting her, her social security number, I started saving for her college. So, you know, you're allowed to invest a certain amount every year, and I figured that the rate colleges are going now, I'll be $2, $3 million a year to pay to put her through college, so I might as well start doing what I can when I can now and let that money grow over the next 18 years, so. She's, so we're not panicking when she gets close to going to college. I think the nearer, the closer wolf to the sled, so to speak, is, is the New London educational system, right? I think our elementary schools, if you look at the benchmarks and our standardized testing, we're pretty on par. We're a little behind, but I think a lot of that can be attributed to transient communities, so it's hard to do a one-for-one year-to-year because so many people come and go. But we're pretty much one-to-one up through about fifth-grade elementary school in the city. But there's a drop-off in, in the middle school and high school. So you look at the, you look at the attainment rates, and we're going through the Board of Ed meeting, I was sitting there and looking at the numbers, and we go, we are advertising in, they have a bar chart, right? We're advertising in bar chart form, the good, which is people reading, reading and doing math at grade level, one year behind or two years behind. So two years behind was considered okay because the big red bar was three years behind grade level, which is the lowest that the scale went. And it was atrocious. I don't know, I have the numbers off the top of my head, I have it at home on my computer, but, you know, you're looking at around 60% are more than three years behind. So that means if I had twins, I put one in school in Waterford and one in school in New London, by high school graduation, my New London student would be reading at a ninth grade level, and my, my college, my high school, my, my high school graduating student in Waterford would be graduating on, on par with their, their peers.
And how can that be acceptable?
It's not. We accept it. We accept it as a community because people freak out and scream, you know, whatever intolerance to the issue they have, right? We are failing our students, we are failing our public, and it's part of the reason that people don't want to move to New London, that people with families like me, and even my friends around here, the ones that did live in New London two years ago, that helped me campaign two years ago, every one of them has moved out of the city. Because we're all in our mid-30s or late 30s, and we're all having kids, and they go, "Well, you know, it's great, but I got to get out of here. I got to get my kid, my kid's four, I have to think about elementary school next year," right? They got to put them in a district that they feel, that they, they could trust will graduate them and prepare them for the world, prepare them to go to college, prepare them to go in the military, prepare them for just in general life, right? And I think the New London School District, and, and, again, again, for people on, on, your viewers, that I've been doing, I've been working in the, as a volunteer at the high school for the last 12 years now, on the robotics team. So I was the lead mentor for, not this past year, but the, the previous five years in New London here, you know, doing, you know, six, seven, eight hundred hours a year, helping them build a robot and working with the students. So, you know, I've been, I've been hands-on teaching kids engineering skills on CAD and electrical and machining and robotics and just teamwork in general, and, and...
How are they doing? How, how's, how's the New London robotics team doing? How many kids participate?
So we've, we've really struggled since the end of COVID. COVID really was tough. We, before COVID, we were losing our, our spot in the high school, you know, geographically, our real estate to work in the high school. We lost our, our teacher that was supporting us, so we ended up having to move to Groddens. We were working out of Groddens facility for three years, going into the pandemic, the year before the pandemic and going into it. Before that, when we did have support and a space in New London, we, in 2017, we made a amazing Cinderella story run to the world championship, which, where we were the finalists. We, we all went to the finals out of 6,000-plus teams in the world. We were one of the three teams, it was a three-team alliance, so we're one of the three teams to lose in the very last match of the season for the entire world. A true Cinderella story. Actually, two of those team members from New London High School, one of which was at, from the STEM school, but one of which was an actual New London resident, actually of, now work for me at EB, not work for me, but worked with me at EB in engineering. So, you know, 2017, they graduated, I think, 2018, they've both since graduated, and actually, sorry, three of them have now work at EB. So of the, of that graduating class, from when we were a successful team, when we did have 30 kids on there, we had support, and we were working, we, we've had a good turnout. They, they've come back to the area, they've come back to communities, some of them are still living in New London, some are moved out into other towns around here, but, you know, they're still in the area, they're working at EB with us. I see them now, it's weird that they're adults, like they were, I remember when they were 14-year-old kids, and now I've been, I guess, 12 years, so, you know, they're, they're...
That's such a terrific story. I mean, it's good to get, see a little bit of a light at the end of the tunnel, and it's not just a freight train coming at you.
That's why it's rewarding to do it. During COVID, it was tough, just access and the school policies and trying to get parents involved and, and, you know, it was tough. And I think we really have had a, the last two seasons have been a real big rebuilding season. I think now, we now have a teacher again at the school. We have actors back to the high school this year, we were able to build a robot at the school, but again, you're starting from scratch again. I think we had two returning students for a team of maybe six or eight kids, and with having a baby now and some other side endeavors, I, I've stepped back, I call myself the lead mentor emeritus now, so I'm mentoring the mentors, so. I have a new crop of, I think, six or seven EB engineers all in their 20s that have taken over the team, that have tried to train those guys. The ones that were students when I first started are now all coming to EB as engineers, I'm getting them involved, trying to train them, and this last season was kind of leaving them on their own. And at this point, you know, when I, when I first took over the team as the lead mentor, I had two engineers. It was me and one other guy and two parents. And we had 30 students, it was the opposite problem. Then I tried to get mentors and more mentors, now we're at six mentors and six students, so we're on par, so I kind of stepped back, said, "I'm not going to, I'll give you advice if you ask for it, let me, let me help you guys get adjusted," and, and also working with the projects committee at the school and making sure we actually have tools. So for the first time in 12 years, we had an end mill in the lead in the high school. So basic, basic tools that every team should have. We were, you know, using loner tools that the mentors were bringing in. I had, you know, I got mine back after six years at the high school, so some of my tools the last year. So, so finally, the school's starting to get the, the equipment we need, we're starting to get them lined up. It's now just a matter of recruiting, getting them motivated to go back and do work, right? So high work, high reward system, you know, payoff, like any, any, any big program you work on.
In our remaining few moments, is there, are there any other issues or topics that you'd like to address that you feel are important as we are moving forward and that why people should look at you and say, "I should vote for Aaron I because..."
So I think there's, going back to two things I already touched on, one, the first was the downtown, the vacancies in downtown. I don't think it's purely based on public safety, and it's part of the, the equation, but I think you have a lot of, the mayor's right, there's a lot of landlords that have no incentive to do anything to their property, right? They own a property in downtown New London purely for the tax incentive to, for the development area and to leave it vacant and write that off on their successful properties, right? It's a, it's a, it's a conscious business, business decision to leave some of these storefronts vacant by the owners. The city cannot force them to change that with the current setup we have. Conversely, the other thing I brought up is housing, right? Housing has gotten much worse in the two years since the last time I brought it up and ran on housing. I think a first-time homebuyer, tax abatement is a huge way to help motivate people to buy property here as well as to fix it up. But I think also, our taxes are high, our mil rates are high, there's no incentive to fix up our property. If you can leave it derelict to the point of, of blight, you know, you're going to be assessed at a lower value. It's counterintuitive, right? Unless, and then the flip side of that is people want to use them for, for rental properties, right? We're still a coastal city, you know, you drive around, you know, anywhere along the, the beach now, there's tons of out-of-state plates around there, right? How many of those properties are, are being used as, as Airbnbs now by the owners, right? They, they own a property here as a secondary home. So I want to, I want to change the paradigm, right? And change it from motivating, you know, instead of having a, a tax system where we're hurting ourselves for people to fix it up and leave half the city blighted and half the city very nice Airbnbs, I want to get to a point where we have something like, like in, so in Pennsylvania, there's something called land value tax. It was a concept from the turn of the century that kind of swept through like Chicago and the Midwest, and then the only place it really caught on was in, was in Pennsylvania. They have it in a lot of smaller cities in Pennsylvania, which ironically about the same size as New London, with the same problems as New London. It's geographically small, they partitioned off all their, their rural area around the city. So start with the land value tax, right? So you're renting the property or you reassess the property values around the city based on the value of the land you're on. Because everyone should be working, except in our system, everyone's working about the empty lot, right? So the empty lot isn't helping the city at all, it's not making the city any money. People are sitting on it as speculative property because they think, "Oh, it's going to go up in value in, in five years," or they're sitting on it because they think that they can resell it for a profit, or they're sitting on it because they go, "Oh, I have rent-controlled house, I'm providing, you know, Section 8 housing this property, and I'm going to let it get more and more derelict because I need to maximize my profit margin." So as long as the home inspectors don't have a problem with it, I'm not going to worry about putting any money into this property because I'm going to get the same amount of money regardless from the state. So I think having a land value tax, we actually evaluate the, the value of the property, that the land that is used versus the, the condition it's in, may actually drive people to want to improve the condition. They can then resell it for a higher value, but a more market-rate fair value then.
Are you aware that this was introduced for study in the city about a dozen years ago?
Yes, I think the only thing I actually agree with Ernie Hewitt on when he put this, so Ernie Hewitt went to the state and said, "Can we make it legal to do this in the state?" Because at the time, Connecticut, it was not legal because there's a whole bunch of people on the west, the west coast of, of, you know, the Gold Coast here in Connecticut that were terrified of being asked to pay a fair market price for their house. So Ernie brought that to the state and pushed for it, and I think, coming from very different perspectives of why it's beneficial, but I, I don't think it's a partisan issue, I think it's actually a way that we can move forward as a community. Again, a non-wedge issue, a non-social issue, it's, it's a win-win-win-win-win for everyone in the community. I've yet to find anyone other than people that, that are living on coastal properties that aren't paying flood insurance, that have overly expensive houses, that they're[1701.38] that they're paying very little on taxes, would have any opposition. So yes, the people that lose are the people that have been gaining so much lately, but the people that win is the rest of the city.
Now, the current administration, from my perspective, is gambling heavily on rentals. I mean, he does not seem all that concerned with some of the issues you've been outlining, especially with homeownership. All these new buildings or apartments, there's no condos. We're not building new houses. How do we change the mindset there?
I think he's gambling on the fact that there's a large, young demographic coming to work at EB right now, thinking, young people are going to rent. They don't have the money to buy a house. The overall housing market is too expensive for young people to buy a house. He's betting on the fact that they can squander their money. And I think also, it's a lot easier to acquiesce to five or six developers that are donating heavily to your reelection campaign, who stand to make a lot of money off of owning these properties. You know, a 150-unit apartment complex is going to be very lucrative for one person, but it's going to be very unlucrative for everyone else that lives in there or tries to build wealth through it. So I think it's not, it's not like, anything in any, you know, socialist country, there's a few people that gain a whole bunch, and a whole bunch of people that get stuck in poverty, so.
Ain't that the truth? Well, I'll tell you, this, I think that you've got a, certainly, a bevy of fresh thought on a multitude of topics. And I'm looking forward to seeing your campaign develop, and I hope that you have an opportunity to touch as many people as possible. And I think that you'll have an opportunity to achieve some success. But you've got a lot of work ahead of you, that's for sure. This, folks have a propensity to go with, it's familiar. So you've got to go out there and let people know who you are, and that you're safe, that you're somebody that they can feel good about, feel comfortable with, and our Democratic friends, that they will cross party lines and vote for you. Because you need a lot of them. There's not enough Republicans in New London to win.
I think overall, the demographic is shifting in the country for the younger generation. I think the conservative, the small-C conservative party has become the Democratic party, right? They represent Wall Street, big tech, big media. You know, the things they pushed, the boomers pushed for in the '60s have become standard policy, right? The Democrats are led by Pelosi and Biden in their '80s, right? So we have an older generation that's pushing a progressive agenda, and I think the younger generation is starting to see that it's not going to help. I think the millennials, my generation, is the first generation to realize that we're going to have it tougher and rougher than our parents' generation in all of American history. So I think the conservative party now, or the Republican party now, is becoming, is transitioning from being the party of no, or we don't want to do that, to the party of common sense and the party of what works and how can we make something work better, right? We got to get away from the old dynamic of liberal and conservative and be the parties, because the left has already moved away from being liberal, right? They're, for the most part, illiberal in terms of their policies, right? A lot of the things they do are not classically liberal. The conservative side is now going, has to become more of what was classical liberalism and become more of common sense and practicality and free-market solutions.
Well, I think you're spot on with that. And with that, we've run out of time. So I want to thank you for carving out an hour and spending it here on City Focus, and I hope that we'll have a chance to speak to you as the campaign evolves, and give them hell.
Yep. And if you guys want to follow me, @ID4NewLondon on Facebook. ID for with the number four, so.
Very good. All right, folks, thank you for watching City Focus. We'll be on again next week, and I'll be joined by Tony D'Angelo. Good night.